Good evening, welcome to tonight's city council meeting. I'll call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Yes, Mayor Ford.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bullock.
Here.
Councilman Amador.
Present.
Councilman Teeter.
Here.
Councilwoman Carson.
Present.
Councilman Diaz.
Here.
Councilman McAldowney.
Here.
Councilwoman Elliott.
Present.
Councilman Douglas.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. For the record, everyone is here tonight, which is good to see, especially since we have the pleasure this evening of having Girl Scout troop 6147 to present the colors. Very glad that they're here. We always love it when we have some young folks come in, and I think this is, out of all the years, the first time I've got to see the Girl Scouts here to do the colors. Usually it's Boy Scouts or Cub Scouts, but it's great that we get to have the Girl Scouts here. So I'm going to turn it over to this young lady at the podium and let her run this portion of the...
Ladies and gentlemen, please stand for the presentation of our flag. Color guard, attention. Color guard, advance. Color guard, post colors. Color guard, honor your flag. Ladies and gentlemen, please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Color guard, retreat.
Well, thank you very, very much for being here this evening. I'm sure that, you know, I do this sometimes, my staff usually freaks out, but I'm sure that somewhere, somehow, will get you passes for the rec center or for the water park or something over to you guys. We want to make sure that you know you're welcome here anytime to come here and do this, and I understand one of you have a grandmother up here. Ah, I see which one it is. Yes. So Councilwoman Carson, it's great that your family's involved in extracurricular activities in the community, and what I want you to remember is to get ahold of your grandma when it comes time for cookies, and you make sure everybody in your pack troop, what do you call it, troop? Group troop? Everybody in the troop needs to have the addresses of everybody up here, and you sell those cookies, all right? Especially this guy. He's got a lot of money and he likes cookies. So, before we let you off the hook, I'd like to ask the council to please come down front and let's take a picture with the troop and their leaders. So, thank you for the pledge of allegiance and the color guard, okay? Alright, everybody ready? Cheese. One more? Excellent, thank you.
Congratulations.
And, you know, we have to recognize the one Boy Scout that's here. Alright, at this time, I would like to ask the staff to please pass around the microphone and allow the audience to introduce themselves.
Rick Carson.
Janice Carson.
Kevin Carson.
Mark Bodine.
Dennis Mann.
Kevin Vincel.
Bob Muzengo.
Randall Wiggum.
Roger Japp.
Andrew Pyhaley, Public Works.
Lissy Henson, Public Works.
Jim Fitzmaurice, JR Engineering, representing Midrail Real Estate.
Steve Wilson, MMW Architects.
Brad Lorenzen, Blue Sky.
Barb Vanderwall, Saturn Vanderwall, representing Eagle Creek Metro District.
Sam Stein, representing Midrail Real Estate.
Nicole Frank.
Oscar Madera.
Jose Wardiola.
Danny Thomas.
Betty Thomas.
Renee Leinberger, troop 1647.
Amy Avery.
Aiden Avery.
Ava Avery.
Amelia Leinberger.
Olivia Carson.
Alright, again, thank you all for being here tonight. We're going to start the evening off with proclamations and recognitions. We have a proclamation supporting first responders, and I would like to invite any and all first responders in the audience to please come forward. That's right, Mr. Carson's back there too. I forgot, your fireman too. Good. Mr. Attorney, you want to read the proclamation, please?
Proclamation: Whereas first responders include law enforcement, fire, rescue, medical towing, and other frontline personnel; and whereas recent fatalities among first responders in the Denver region raise public awareness of the danger to which first responders at a crash or traffic incident scene are subjected while safeguarding the well-being of others; and whereas at the direction of Governor Hickenlooper, the Colorado State Patrol recently convened a task force to review first responder safety and has launched its "One Scene, One Culture, Save Lives" campaign; and whereas annual roadway fatalities in the Denver region increased by forty percent between 2014 and 2016; and whereas first responders within Commerce City routinely respond to traffic incidents along interstates and state highways to protect the public; and whereas the upcoming holiday season reinforces the importance of public awareness for first responders as drivers travel unfamiliar roadways or encounter unpredictable weather. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Commerce City hereby declares support for first responders and urges the public to respect their lives by driving safely and knowing the State of Colorado's move-over law.
Thank you. I'm open for a motion. Mr. McAldowney.
I would move to approve the proclamation.
Mr. Teeter.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. I want to thank each and every one of you and the teams that you also lead for everything that you do, from our police officers to both fire departments, to our ambulance services. That's what keeps our community safe and is top priority, so we really appreciate what you guys do. I'd like to ask you to come on up. We're going to come down and take a picture with all of you, and I don't have the proclamation, Mr. City Manager? So I don't know who does. And if you'll find that, we'll make sure that you guys all get a copy of that proclamation.
Sean.
Yes, sir. Mr. Teeter.
I was at this presentation that was given to us by the State Patrol, the Dr. Cog meeting, and just so that you gentlemen out there also know that we also threw the tow truck drivers in with this because they're on the scene with everybody on those highways, and they're in just as much danger as our firemen and policemen and ambulance jockeys. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Carson.
First of all, thank you to each and every one of you. The number-one job we have up here is to keep citizens of this city safe. We can't do it without you guys. So, thank you. This proclamation is the smallest thing we could do to thank you, but we do honor every one of you every single day, and thank you.
Alright, if you all join me down front, please.
Now we got this next presentation for us retired.
Okay, now it's time in our agenda that we do the citizen communication. I do have three people that have signed up on citizen communication, but it looks like all three are here for items that are on our regular agenda for tonight. So I just want to double-check. If you're here and you're here to speak on an agenda item, then you'll be allowed the opportunity to speak at the time that agenda item is heard. If you're here for something else that's not on an agenda item, and you came here to bring forward a concern or anything of that nature to this council, now is the time. So I'm going to ask, is there anyone in the audience who's here to speak during citizen communication for those reasons? Raise your hand, please. Alright, seeing none, we'll move forward and we'll make sure that Brad, Steve, and Margot all have the opportunity to speak during the items that they are here to deal with. We have the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They are presented to council. For a single motion and vote, any member of council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion and a separate vote. Tonight, there are six items listed under the consent agenda. Does anyone on council wish to remove an item off of the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing none, I need a motion. Mr. McAldowney.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda. Will the city attorney please read the six titles?
Resolution 2017-108, resolution supporting reauthorization by the General Assembly of the Colorado Lottery Division in 2018. Resolution 2017-117, resolution appointing members to designated boards and commissions of Commerce City. Resolution 2017-118, a resolution approving the 2018 City of Commerce City legislative principles. Resolution 2017-124, resolution approving intergovernmental agreements between the City of Commerce City, Colorado, and the South Adams County Fire Protection District and the Greater Brighton Fire Protection District regarding the assessment, collection, and remittance of emergency services impact fees. Resolution 2017-125, resolution authorizing temporary extension for municipal judge agreement and appointment. Resolution 2017-128, resolution approving Second Amendment to agreement for reimbursement of costs with Eagle Creek Metropolitan District.
Thank you. Alright, I have a motion and a second. And the titles have all been read, I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, consent agenda has been approved unanimously by the city council this evening. Now we'll move into our public hearings. We have Resolution 2017-112, Ordinance AN-249-17, Ordinance V-87-17, and Ordinance Z-943-17. The next four items will be heard under one presentation but voted on separately, so I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing and invite staff forward to give their presentation to the city council.
Hey, Mayor Ford, I'm going to ask a few questions of Mr. Timms before the presentation. Mr. Timms, can you state your position for the record?
Yes, Planning Manager with the city.
Are you familiar with the annexation case file AN-24917, the petition in the area proposed to be annexed?
I am.
Has the city council adopted a plan for the area pursuant to CRS 3112-1051E?
Yes, they have.
Is at least one-sixth of the area to be annexed contiguous with the existing boundaries of the city?
Yes, it is.
Does a community of interest exist between the areas proposed to be annexed and the city?
Yes, it does.
Are the areas proposed to be annexed urbanized, or will they be urbanized in the near future?
Yes, they are.
Are the areas proposed to be annexed integrated or capable of being integrated with the city?
Yes, they are.
Have all the owners of the lands to be annexed signed the petition?
Yes, they have.
Have annexation proceedings been commenced for any of the land proposed to be annexed to another municipality?
No, they have not.
Will the proposed annexation result in the detachment of area from any school district and the attachment of the area to another school district?
No, they will not.
Do the annexation petitions meet the requirements of law?
Yes, they do.
Will the proposed annexations have the effect of extending the boundaries of the city more than three miles in any direction in any one year?
No, they won't.
Is the entire width of any street or alley proposed to be annexed included?
Yes, they are.
And then have all the requirements of CRS 3112-104, 3112-105, and Section 30 of Article 2 of the State Constitution been satisfied with respect to the annexation?
Yes, they have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of council. I'll start my presentation just with a happy Thanksgiving greetings to you all from the Planning Division. But we do have four actions tonight: resolution tied to the annexation, the annexation ordinance, a zoning ordinance, and a vacation of right-of-way ordinance as well. This is for property around 84th Avenue and Ulster Street in the Irondale area. The applicant, Midrail Real Estate and Elite Transport Services, for annexation, PUD zone document, and vacation, again, a portion of Ulster Street between 84th and 83rd avenues. So this is the vicinity map here in Irondale. We have Highway 2 off to the bottom right. We have Rosemary is over here on the west side, and the areas that are part of this application for the zoning are highlighted here. This big area, plus this area here in white checkerboard, and this little area here in the orange checkerboard. And the vacation of right-of-way is this area highlighted in red. So about fifty-four acres currently zoned I-2, and then this unincorporated area is zoned Adams County A-1, and then again, this is Ulster Street. Here's 83rd, and here's 84th. A little close-in, again, of the vicinity map. This is all under Midrail, and then this little piece here is part of the, was part of the Nance PUD. If you remember, council just approved a rezoning for this whole piece a couple of months ago to I-2. Part of the reasoning for that was to allow this potential rail spur going in. In terms of the comprehensive plan for Irondale, you see it's mostly here, this dark purple, which is general industrial, and then with a little bit of lighter purple, which is industrial distribution, but it is all industrial in nature. In terms of the aerial, this aerial is a little bit out of date because there's a big building there right now, but you will see that a lot of the site to the south is vacant, and then this area here that's going to be annexed has some truck storage and has a little structure on it, and then the area as part of this old Nance PUD is currently undeveloped as well. Here's some site photos. Again, this shows what's going on up there now, but the building is up there, a quite large building, and from different angles, again, on the northern part of the site. In terms of case history, this property goes back and has quite a bit of history, going back in the early nineteen, or in the 1970s. However, what's relevant tonight is in red. So in 2016, city council did approve a rezoning to I-2, and again, there was a various zoning designations, agricultural, I-1, and I-2 with conditions, and council rezoned it all to I-2. In addition, earlier this year, Planning Commission did provide feedback on the PUD concept schematic. This is before council tonight. And then again, as I alluded to earlier, a couple of months ago, that Nance PUD was rezoned to I-2 as well. So in terms of the rezoning back in 2016, again, this was rezoned all to I-2. This was the concept plan that was shown at that time, and so it's been a consistent messaging effort. Lot 1 is up here where the Instell Steel site is. The future rail spur basically runs along here and then curves around, and then will run out to Highway 2, or the BNSF railroad track there. At this time, we just have the development for Lot 1. Lots 2, 3, and 4, however many lots will be, are just conceptual, and no applications have been submitted. In terms of the concept plan, this was reviewed again by Planning Commission earlier this spring, but again, it shows the rail spur here going up to the BNSF line, and it shows the Ulster Street vacation between 83rd and 84th. It also highlights what we call the white parcel, one and a half acres of what's going to be annexed, and then this Nance rail easement that's going to be transferred in title to zoning as part of PUD as well. So the request is to annex this property on Ulster Street, this one and a half acres, 8330, and to do an annexation zoning from Adams County A-1 to Instell PUD zoning designation. And then the rezoning of the property is currently all I-2. That would all become the Instell property's PUD zoning designation, and then a vacation of Ulster Street between 83rd and 84th. This is a copy from the annexation map, and again, it just shows that area there. Again, Ulster's up here to the west, shows that one and a half acres that would be annexed now into the city. In terms of the zone document itself, the land use plan highlighted in that zone document, you see the different areas, A, B, C, and then up here, the annexation area, the Nance rail easement. This is all appropriate now. One thing to realize, the fire district has acquired a little piece up here, so that will not be part of the PUD up there by their station. In terms of the zone document itself, there's five pages to this particular document. The uses defaults to I-2. It has a long list of different uses, allows I-2 with three additional uses added, one of which is a rail spur. The bulk standards are basically the I-2 standards with a couple of small modifications. Landscape standards, again, some minor modifications to plant counts and detention area landscaping, and some are overall fencing with some increased heights along interior lot lines of this industrial park. The Planning Commission in their review does believe that there's value in modifying these standards, given the intended development and drainage implications, and with support of the proposed PUD zoning. In terms of the rail spur, rail spurs are allowed in our city I-2 or I-3 with a conditional use permit. However, However, a zoning such as this, a PUD, would give it a stronger entitlement than a CUP would. And so as part of this PUD, a rail spur would be allowed by right. And again, the Planning Commission was supportive of the rail spur since it will allow for comprehensive development, and it can also help mitigate potential impacts of alleviating some truck traffic in that Irondale area, especially along 88th and Rosemary. In terms of the right-of-way vacation along Ulster there, the applicant is proposing to accommodate all existing utilities as easements is needed. So if anyone does have existing utility lines in that area, they would still be contained and still be allowed for through easements. The applicant does own properties on both sides of Ulster, so that no one's being left out or unable to access their properties. Planning Commission was not opposed to the vacation, and will eliminate a rail crossing of a public road, which will increase safety, which Planning Commission supports. So there'll just be one rail crossing there at 84th. This just shows, again, the location of the vacation between Ulster, 84th. They'll basically have a cul-de-sac down here and let these properties to the east access, and then it will go all the way down through 83rd. In terms of public comment, staff did receive one request for additional information about this, and the additional information addressed the concerns, and the person was supportive overall of the project. There was a neighborhood meeting on this project back in August with approximately 12 attendees from the neighborhood. They were generally supportive of the project. They did have questions about noise and traffic. However, they were supportive of the vacation of right-of-way since a lot of people, it seems like, use 83rd and part of Ulster to cut through, especially when Rosemary's backed up. And so some of the residents in the area were actually supportive of eliminating some of that cut-through traffic. In terms of recommendations, so the annexation does not go to Planning Commission, it only goes to city council. So the development review team is recommending approval of the annexation, both in the resolution and the ordinance. In terms of the zoning, that did go before Planning Commission. They did vote 5 to 0 to forward it with a favorable recommendation with one condition, and the applicant must plat the property for the rail spur, which is known as Area D, and consolidate it into the white property, Area C, prior to the issuance of any building permits in either Area C or D. So it would not affect the existing steel operation, just more future building to the south. And the applicant actually has submitted a plat now for that. Likewise, for the vacation of right-of-way, the Planning Commission, again, held a public hearing, took testimony, voted 5 to 0 to forward that request with a favorable recommendation and one condition, as stated there as well. So with that, that concludes staff's presentation. I'll be glad to answer anything, and then also Mr. Stein is here to address council as well.
Great. Thank you. As council, have any questions for our staff at this time? Seeing none, would the applicant like to come forward and add anything to the presentation? Good evening.
Hi, my name is Sam Stein. I'm here to represent Midrail Real Estate and Instel Steel West. I just want to say we're excited to do business in Commerce City. We're excited to get this place up and running, and this rail spur will, it'll help, not only will it help us run our business, it'll help us develop the remainder of the area as well. So, available for questions.
Great, thank you. Any questions for the applicant from council? Seeing none, thank you for being here, Mr. Stein.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on this matter? Seeing no one, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. I'm open for a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2017-28. Mr. McAldoney.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve Resolution 2017-28.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Resolution 2017-112, resolution making findings of fact by the city council of the City of Commerce City and its conclusion relative to the eligibility of annexation to the City of Commerce City of the property located at 8330 Ulster Street, Commerce City, Colorado, in AN-24917.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I'm open for a motion and a second to introduce Ordinance AN-249-17. Mr. Bullock.
Move to introduce Ordinance AN-249-17 by council as seated on first reading.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Ordinance AN-24917, an ordinance approving and accomplishing the annexation of contiguous unincorporated territory described in Exhibit A attached Tier 2 and made a part here of, located at 8330 Ulster Street, Commerce City, Colorado.
All right, I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, AN-249-17 introduced unanimously by the council this evening. Now I'm open for a motion and a second to accept the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission on Case V-87-17. Mr. Bullock.
Move to accept the findings and recommendation of the Planning Commission on Case V-87-17.
Thank you. Mr. Amador.
Second. It's for the zoning case, right? The findings of fact and recommendation? Okay, just want to clarify, for the record, but I think it's good. Thank you.
You're just trying to screw me up, aren't you?
I just want to make the evening.
All right, it's okay. All right, I have a motion and a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Amador.
Thank you.
Findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I'm open for a motion and a second to introduce Ordinance V-87-17 by council as seated. Mr. McAldoney.
So moved.
Mr. Douglas.
Second.
I have that motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read the title?
VA-87-17, an ordinance vacating a right-of-way on the property described on Exhibit A attached Tier 2 and made a part here of, consisting of a portion of Ulster Street, City of Commerce City, Colorado.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, V-87-17 introduced unanimously by council this evening. Oh, no, wait, we got Mr. McAldoney didn't vote.
Yep. His button doesn't light up.
All right. We're missing one.
We've got a couple of weeks left.
All right, everybody vote again. Now it's unanimous. All right, next, I need a motion and a second to accept the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission on Case Z-943-17. Mr. Teeter.
Making motion to approve Case Z-943-17.
Thank you, Mr. McAldoney.
Second.
I have that motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Now I'm open for a motion and a second to introduce Ordinance Z-943-17 by council as seated. Mr. Bullock.
Move to introduce Ordinance Z-943-17 by council as seated on first reading.
Mr. Douglas.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Ordinance Z-943-17, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance and zoning map of the City of Commerce City, Colorado, for rezoning to PUD Zone District and approving a PUD Zone document for the property described in Exhibit A attached Tier 2 and made a part here of, generally located on the north and south side of East 84th Avenue, west of Ulster Street, northeast of Ulster Street, and east of 83rd Avenue, and a portion of the adjacent property at Ulster Street and East 83rd Avenue, Commerce City, Colorado.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, it's been introduced unanimously by the council this evening, Z-943-17. All right, we'll move into our next public hearing. Conditional use permit CU-113-17. And I can invite staff forward to make a presentation. The public hearing is now open.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council members. Appreciate your time this evening. Robin Kearns with Planning Staff, here to present conditional use permit case CU-113-17, located at 4308 East 60th Avenue. Our applicant is Blue Sky LLC, and this is a conditional use permit for the sale and storage of flammable, corrosive, explosive, and toxic substance. Our vicinity map shows us the subject property. You see quite a bit going on there as it's zoned I-3, but it's also in the floodplain. Thus, it's a rather complicated picture. But the area, as you can see, is just north of Sand Creek, just south of I-270, and there's some rail and the like. It's kind of a bit of an industrial cul-de-sac of businesses in there. The general comp plan identifies this property as general industrial, and currently it is vacant. You will see some elements. It's been used as, kind of historically, as outdoor storage up until this point. Again, in this photo, you can see as such. I am highlighting as well at the top, existing fire hydrant location. I believe there may be one further in the site as well. The subject site, again, is undeveloped, about 2.2 acres, and it is accessed from East 60th Avenue Frontage Road and then across, basically, easement of 4306, property that allows access to multiple properties. So technically, it doesn't front on the public right-of-way. Our views show us looking north. You'd be looking at the Pepper Tank Company property across the, with those large tanks. Looking east, you're looking at United Asphalt Property and a business beyond that. Looking south, again, you're looking at the United Asphalt Property, buildings and infrastructure. And then looking west, you're basically seeing some of the RenTech buildings, if you're familiar with that site, and a rail spur. So the subject property has been zoned I-3 since our city's inception. In 2007, it was approved but not developed, so those approvals have expired. It was a use-by permit for development in the floodplain, which was our older process. Now we have floodplain development permit. And a development plan for a mag chloride facility associated with a street use of that mag chloride, and snow plows and the like. The current request, again, as a conditional use permit, is for the storage and sale of flammable, corrosive, explosive, and toxic substances associated with a roofing supply company. They're proposing hours of operation from Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. with approximately nine employees. The hazardous materials, you'll see more information about them in your packet, but they are a Suncor PG conventional asphalt, a Suncor industrial asphalt oxidizing flux, and a hydrochloric acid. The Suncor materials are byproducts of the adjacent refinery, which is, these are byproducts of their process. And then the materials have been reviewed by fire, building, and Colorado Public Health officials with no conditions or concerns cited beyond normal permitting and regulations. The current request continued is in more detail about the application. So we have a main building of about 13,025 square feet. Most of that is warehouse with a significant portion of office. This area would both store non-hazardous roofing materials as well as hazardous. And given that it has hazardous materials within it, it would be designated a critical facility, which is a key designation when you're in the floodplain. It requires that buildings be built at least two feet above base flood elevation versus a one-foot base, one foot above base flood elevation. There's also going to be proposed four 12,000-gallon storage tanks. Those would only house hazardous material. And that also would be a critical facility, again, meeting the two-foot above base flood elevation. But in this case, it would also be at a two-foot additional containment area for spills or leaks. And then there's some outdoor storage areas proposed, but these can only house non-hazardous materials. The site plan shows the subject property. Here is the area for the tanks. That is a raised area with the two-foot additional for the case of leaks or the like. Here's our proposed building in the middle. The office area is directed to the west side, taking advantage of some opportunity for some nice views off this property, with more of the warehousing accessed from the east. And then this property, this development is also proposing to do a shared retention pond with the neighboring property at 4306. So that is a component of this development. There is some visibility concern from I-270, so the applicant worked with staff to include some landscaping and some architectural improvements to kind of mitigate that, even though it's not necessarily a right-of-way fronting building. Here's the proposed landscape plan, showing some of this additional landscape along where the storage tanks are and sort of where this loading docks area would be. And then some additional landscaping is required around parking and the retention area. Our elevations show the project's overall scope in the building. The west, you can kind of see the decks and the windows and the like would be servicing the office. And to the east, they've added some nice element of stone to help improve the visual quality from I-270. The Planning Commission analysis found that the proposed application is compliant with the comprehensive plan and Land Development Code, found that the characteristics of the location and site are appropriate for the proposed use, in that the surrounding area is developed and is zoned industrial, and that includes the other properties around it which do contain hazardous materials. With conditions, we found that no, or Planning Commission found no undue burden imposed on adjacent property improvements or city services, and that the proposed site layout provides internal circulation and meets all the Land Development Code and floodplain development standards. On March 9, 2016, so over a year ago, the applicant did conduct a neighborhood meeting. We did have one neighbor show up. It was an adjacent property owner, and no issues were, or concern was expressed. And as of today, staff has received no response to public notice. On November 8, 2017, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and took testimony and voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval subject to the following four conditions. Those being, A, the conditional use permit shall apply for the applicant only, with no right of assignment unless a revision to this conditional use permit is obtained. That is part of our standard in our Land Development Code. B, to receive a certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall install all proposed site improvements associated with this subject city-approved conditional use permit. These improvements include, but are not limited to, new construction of tanks, storage building, paving, fencing, and landscaping as identified in the approved development plan. And C, in no case shall the total storage tank capacity exceed 48,000 gallons. That is something from our Land Development Code where if you exceed that amount, you need to be on a larger property than this one is. And D, all storage tanks shall be colored Bejour tan, which is a part of this, is part of the applicant's application. That is concluding staff's presentation and is available for questions or comment, as well as the applicant. And we really appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. As council, have any questions for staff at this time? Seeing none, if the applicant is present, would like to come forward, add anything to the staff presentation, you're more than welcome to, and then we can allow for opportunity for questions.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. My name's Steve Wilson. I'm with MMW Architects. I represent the applicant here this evening. I really don't have anything to add. I'd just like to thank staff. It's been a complicated project, and they really helped us work through all the issues, and we really appreciate that. I'm available to answer your questions if you might have some.
Great, thank you. Mr. McAldoney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, sir. I just wondered if, and this might be a question for the applicant versus yourself. Understanding that these materials cited in the, in the plan in your process are byproducts of Suncor, how are those materials moved between the Suncor property and this property?
By transport truck.
Tanker vehicle between the properties?
Right, they're adjacent properties, so, yes.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions from council for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and address the city council on the matter of this conditional use permit? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Figure for sure one of our council-elect would have jumped up and said, "I want to speak," but it didn't happen this time. All right, I'm open for a motion and a second to approve the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission. Mr. McAldoney.
Move to approve or accept the facts and findings of the recommendations of the Planning Commission.
Mr. Teeter.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, I'm open for a motion in a second to approve the conditional use permit, CU 113-17. Mr. Bowat.
So move.
Mr. Amador.
Second.
I have a motion, or a motion and a second. Would the city attorney please, oh, you don't need to read the titles for a conditional use permit, do you? So I have a motion in a second to approve the conditional use permit. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. That conditional use permit is approved. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
All right. Now we'll move into ordinances on first reading. We have ordinance 2153. Turn it over to staff for a presentation.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. Tonight I'll be presenting ordinance number 2153, a request to vacate a city-owned, non-active utility easement. The applicant is Christian Brothers Automotive. And my name is Dominic Martinelli, and I will be doing this presentation. So the subject property is zone PUD. This is within the Hogan PUD within proximity to the southeast corner of 104th and Chambers, next to the other commercial development in the area. The applicant is requesting to vacate a city-owned utility easement. Property was plotted as a tract in 2007 during the original Hogan subdivision, and it was formally plotted as a lot in 2016. At the time that that subdivision was completed in late 2016, the utility easement was in place in both circumstances in 2007 and 2016, and no end-users were identified at that time. Since then, the applicant, which is Christian Brothers Automotive, has proposed a 5,000-square-foot automotive service facility, which was approved in June of this year. It went in front of the Board of Adjustment for a use-by permit, and development plan D-34317 was approved administratively. Per the land development code, non-active utility easements that are dedicated to the city can be vacated one of two ways. One via plat, or second via ordinance. The applicant has choose, chosen an ordinance in this circumstance. So on your screens, you'll see the portion of the easement to be vacated. It is, was part of a larger 25-foot access and utility easement, managed by the South Adams County Water and Sanitation District, but dedicated to the City of Commerce City. This specific portion is no longer in use by any of the utility companies, South Adams County, XL, United Power, CenturyLink. So there is a conflict with that specific location, the easement, and where the, the building footprint was approved for the automotive service facility, thus needing the vacation. So there, no objection letters were received from CenturyLink, Comcast, South Adams County Water and Sanitation, United Power, Anexo. And that is my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is not present tonight.
Thank you. Does anyone on council have any questions for staff concerning ordinance 2153? Mr. Bowat?
No, sir.
All right. Saying none, is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and address the council on this ordinance? Saying none. I'm open for a motion in a second to introduce ordinance 2153 by council as seated. Mr. Bowat?
Move to introduce ordinance 2153 by council as seated on first reading. Mr. McAltoni.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. City attorney, please read the title.
Ordinance 2153, an ordinance vacating a non-active utility easement for the property described on Exhibit A attached here too and made a part hereof, consisting of a portion of Lot 3 of the Hogan Commercial Subdivision filing number 7, City of Commerce City, Colorado.
Introduced unanimously this evening by city council. Next item is ordinance 2154. Is there anyone on council has any questions regarding this item? Saying none. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to come forward and address the council on this item? Saying none. I'm open for a motion in a second. Mr. Bowat?
Move to introduce ordinance 2154 by council as seated on first reading.
Mr. Teeter.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Would the city attorney please read the title?
Ordinance 2154, an ordinance amending the 2017 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant Funds and the amount of $8,625.27 for the Bulletproof Vest program in the Police Department and the authorization of the expenditure thereof.
Thank you. Ask for a roll call vote. For the record, ordinance 2154 is introduced unanimously by the city council. All right, we go into presentations. We have the 2016 Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report. Turn that over to staff.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. My name is Cheryl Steinberg. I'm the CDBG Coordinator. And tonight, we're going to take a look again at CDBG, which is Community Development Block Grant, specifically the CAPR report, which is, stands for Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. Now, this, a little bit of background here briefly. CDBG does require through HUD that we report each year on how we've done. That's basically what the CAPR is. So I submit this at the end of the year, and they get to see how we've done. We need to take a look at the top needs of the consolidated plan, which was adopted back in 2016. The needs are there. Neighborhood revitalization, public facilities, housing, economic development, public services, and fair housing activities. So these were identified last year, and this is what we're to pursue each year as we go forward to complete the consolidated plan. So the 2016 projects, just to review, is administration of the grant, then sidewalk construction, and that's $279,000. Then local bus stop improvements as well of $30,000. And you may remember, we had to go back and amend that to this scenario, and that's been taken care of through HUD. Thus far, the money that we've spent, about 75% of the administration has been spent, and that is on track. And it's been done through the hiring and of myself, establishing the division and office, training, amending the annual action plan, and the most of it was going for the, setting up the entire process of how to review applicants, and then producing the next year's annual action plan, which was taken care of by council and submitted to HUD. We've also amended the citizen participation plan, done numerous public meetings and outreach campaigns. We've also joined and hosted several relevant CDBG organizations so that we can start to network with other providers of services of the same kind to try to leverage our actions with others and work together. And we've also drafted, as I mentioned, the citizen participation plan and what's called a limited English proficiency plan, which we must do for HUD as well. The fair housing and equal opportunity activities that we're required to do, I mentioned a couple already, but we've also partnered up with the Denver Metro Fair Housing Center. We'll be working with them with some coordinated efforts to help get the word out to our residents and to those in the business arena about fair housing. We are working with the Metro Homeless Initiative. We're doing outreach campaigns, but that are bilingual, both through all of public meetings, all of our outreach in website newsletters and newspapers. We've reached out to the real estate organizations, churches, nonprofits, senior organizations, food banks, schools, mobile home parks, apartment buildings, et cetera. And then we also were at the neighborhood fair. Now, the public work projects, which is the bulk of the budget, is sidewalks. And we have identified the work locations. We're, just a little bit more of an update for you from when I submitted this. We're now looking at the, acquiring the necessary easement, easements for the properties that we're looking at. And we're setting up for bid, a request for bid. We're hoping to have openings in December, awards in January, and completion in May. And that, and then bus stops will follow suit. Right now, we're, we're focusing on the sidewalks first. So that's a brief update. That's pretty much what was in the plan. Do you have any questions?
Does council have any questions of Cheryl at this time? Saying none. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to administrative council business. Does any of the council have any administrative council business they'd like to bring forward this evening? Saying none. I do want to bring up one item, and only because I, I talked with Anthony Graves at the NLC conference. Said, I believe it's 50th and Forest Drive. Is that correct? 49th, 50th? 49th, 50th. There's some, some trailers I've talked to the city manager about already. I've turned it in on our system, the CRM system. I did get a call back from one of our code enforcement officers saying GPS doesn't show it being Commerce City. The complaint, as many of the council know, is, is the complainant is a former council member that also knows that that area was, has always been part of Commerce City. And, and so trying to get this resolved because it's old, unlicensed or registered semi-trailers that are being used to house homeless people are living in them. There's a lot of mattresses, a lot of furniture and debris along this right-of-way. I have Brian looking into it, but I did talk to Anthony Graves with Denver at NLC to coordinate a cleanup, so that we're not, they're not cleaning up part of it, and we're cleaning up part of it at different times, which could displace some of the trash and/or the living situations, so that we're going to all be coordinated cleanup. But I know if Mr. Teeter runs into any council member, because this has gone on for a while now, that he will likely complain to you about it. I want to make sure that you have an answer to his concerns, that we are working on it. Brian's in the loop, and they will be setting up and coordinating with Denver, cleaning up that area. Rick, you might pass that along. Just so you know, I'm still working on it.
I will do that. I'm sure I'll see you Thursday.
Good. That's right. That's right. Thursday's Thanksgiving. So I don't have anything else to add. I just wanted to make sure that when you get any concerns about that, it is in the loop. Mr. McAltoni, do you have some administrative council business?
I do. I had the opportunity to attend our most recent CERT training, which is Community Emergency Response Team training that was hosted by our city's emergency manager, Kirk Dominic, back on November 9th. I had tried multiple times over the course of my time on council to participate in one of these trainings, and typically they're extended over a number of days, and so scheduling was always a conflict. But Mr. Dominic had identified a new mix of times, and so it was about a three-hour block on one night and then most of a Saturday. And I have to tell you, it was a fantastic, fantastic program. At one point about midway through the session, I was just kind of observing, standing back and letting some folks get at it. We were doing a drill on cribbing, trying to raise the dumpster over here in the, the loading bay and free a dummy's, a pair of fake dummy legs, as if somebody had been trapped. But it was a, the exercise required a group of people who didn't know each other to coordinate and problem-solve and deal with an unknown situation. And the first thing that I thought of was how close we are to turning over this council to a new mix. And I thought about points in my past on this council where we brought new folks in and the difficulty of bringing that new body up to speed. And so my comment to Mr. Dominic was, my God, this is something that every new council should go through together. Whether folks have participated in CERT before or not, the, the overall, for really two things. One, I think that exercise in and of itself is a great team builder, a great opportunity to learn about each other in a real-world situation. And second, every single skill that you walk away with from CERT training has applicability in your daily life. I think it's an important set of skills, especially for leaders in the community to have a sense of, in, especially in the current and changing climate that we live in, whether it's natural or man-made incidents that we need to be made aware of. And so I would suggest that this council direct staff to explore scheduling a CERT session for the new council. I, I think it would be an invaluable experience. And there's a, a second piece to that, and I won't now remember what the ICS number is, but there is a, there's a specific training that follows under the Incident Command, the National Incident Management System suite of training that is aimed at local elected officials. And I, I believe some of us took a version of that many years ago, and I don't think we've taken it in a long, long time. But I would suggest that that also be made part of the council onboarding. In my new profession, I'm exposed to emergency management and Incident Command on a daily basis, and I, I look back in frustration on most days, thinking, holy cow, why didn't we do more? I think there is a ton that this council and the future council should be, could be doing. And I want to end with taking my hat off to Mr. Dominic. I think the work that he has done behind the scenes really needs a bit of a spotlight. I don't know that any of us had a sense of how much he has done that is truly groundbreaking in terms of other, other metro communities and what he's done in terms of trauma preparation, training of the entire staff, literally putting trauma kits in public works vehicles, police vehicles. And I know we saw the article a few weeks ago about, I believe it was Detective Sergeant Morgan, who had the opportunity to apply those skills, learned from Mr. Dominic in a real-world situation and have a incredibly positive outcome. So all that said, I would just want to make the recommendation that those two things at minimum happen. And I would also, again, as part of my compliments to Mr. Dominic, just say, I think it would be in the future council's best interest to make CERT and the growing of that program that Mr. Dominic envisions a priority. He has a fantastic mental map of where this program can go and the role that a CERT team can play when really fully realized. I had the opportunity this past week while attending the International Association of Emergency Managers Conference in Long Beach, get to meet and interact with members of the Long Beach CERT team, who literally helped run and support the, the event. But I spent quite a bit of time talking with the gentleman from Long Beach Fire who runs that program and, and learning about how critical a partner that CERT team is in helping to support the mission of the Long Beach Fire and Police Department, in that you simply don't have enough people to go around. And so we have the firsthand experience of thinking back to the floods of 2013 and the taxing that that put on our public works and our, the entirety of our staff. The ability for our community to have activated a formal CERT team or teams to help, whether it was supporting the, you know, the, the evacuation of folks out of the senior facility or any number of things, lending support to our first responders, again, in the theme of our opening proclamation tonight. I think it would be my suggestion that this council look, look at that and reflect on that ideally after you've had the opportunity to go through that, that training with, with Mr. Dominic. So if that needs to be in the form of a motion, I will summarize, but...
Ryan, do you need a motion, or can you just work, work on putting something together? Great. Thank you. Thanks, Jason. All righty. We'll move into reports. City manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did distribute via email. Actually, Ms. Halsted just sent it out a few moments ago, this week's edition of the city manager update. We have a number of updates to city council action items, including the electronic signs that the Burlington-Northern Santa Fe Railroad installed with respect to the roadwork they did at the crossing at Rosemary and Highway 2. An update on some traffic studies we've conducted in the area around Union Elementary School. An update on concerns about how the striping had been installed on southbound Chambers, and I see they've made some changes to that. An update on some internal work going on between our park staff and our police department regarding some concerns council raised about public health, safety, and vandalism at our city parks and trails. That'll be an ongoing effort. We have an update on the Nine Health Fair, which occurred last weekend, and some important information about some upcoming closures at the Eagle Point Recreation Center that are related to the renovation work. So please reach out if you have any questions about those updates.
Thank you.
organizing for cities of over 50,000 people to kind of coordinate best practices and management issues, so attending that next week. Look forward to getting some good stuff for the city out of that.
Great, thank you. Where's it at?
It'll be at the CML offices.
Oh, okay. Well, I want to start out by saying thanks to my mayor, Pro Tim, for a nice Camp David Presidential Hat, huh? His wife got to go and train the staff of Camp David, so it's nice that you brought me a little something, or she did. I need to thank her.
Yeah, don't.
I want to start off by, everybody knows that we had an election since the last council meeting, and I want to congratulate Benjamin Huesman at large, Jose Guardiola, who's here tonight, at large, Oscar Madera, Ward One, and Nicole Frank for winning in Ward Three. Those will be your new council members, and we will swear them in on December 5th. Is that correct?
Fourth.
Fourth, December 4th. But I would imagine they're all going to be here next Monday for the lighting of the trees for City Hall, so we'll get them started early and glad that they have the right to take a few days off before they have to hit the ground running, but it's nice to still see a majority of them here tonight. I'll start off with Adams County Mayor's Lunch. Commerce City hosted. Thank you to Buffalo Run and our staff for putting a good lunch together. And several of those folks had elections. Not a lot changed locally from, you know, North Glenn does have a new mayor, Westminster kept their mayor. We will have a new mayor in Brighton. We don't know who that'll be yet because they have a runoff. Several council changes across Adams County, so a lot of our colleagues will change, and we will start to build those relationships. I had a meeting with Century Link. Thanks to Michelle Halsted for being there with me. Level one fiber sold out to Century Link in our area. Level three, that's what it is, level three. So Century Link will now be the primary provider for fiber in our area. Michelle does have some mapping and some limited mapping. They didn't give us much. However, I know we'll have ongoing negotiations, and there's always the issue of whether they have to have a franchise agreement or not, and so our staff's working through some of that now. But they are working with some of our builders for services as we speak. Several of us took a tour of the Native Roots cultivation facility that is outside of Commerce City but right on our border on 50th and Dahlia. I did have the pleasure and honor of being the grand marshal again this year for North Fields Parade for Bass Pro Shops. Santa Claus arriving at the store seems to continue to grow bigger and bigger, and I always enjoy going over there and doing that for them. I also want to thank Councilwoman Elliott for being the mayor for the last week or about.
Nothing happened.
I was surprised. I was surprised I didn't see it on the news. City Hall's still here. Staff is still here. There's a lot of good, so thank you, Crystal. You did a good job. I did, we were all sitting down having dinner, and we said, hey, Rick, call Crystal and tell her to fix something, and he did. She didn't buy it, but you did. You jumped right on that, huh? After you said, oh, you butt dialed me. I know what happened. I was there. Myself, Mr. Douglas, Mr. Bullock, Mr. Teeter, and Councilwoman Carson, all were at the National League of Cities Convention in Charlotte, North Carolina. I want to thank the citizens for allowing all of us to go. I did bring back quite a bit of information I'll be bringing and dropping off to the city manager. Some of that involves stuff like legislation on drones, what's legal, what's not legal through the FAA. It's a time, you know, especially after the elections, to be able to visit with some of these new elected officials and some of those outgoing and start setting up those relationships that we talked about. Talked to Anthony Graves, as I mentioned earlier, with Denver, one of the chief of staffs for Michael Hancock, and talked about the need to sit down and have our annual meeting. I know that will be coming up. It's not something that we can do right this minute because we want to get the new council seated, but every year we do sit down with the Denver mayor and city council members and talk about how we work together. We have a border with them, so we have a lot of our legislative meetings will be coming up and new elected officials that we'll all be having to learn how to work with. So it's not just this council working with our new council members. We have to- we have- have more of a county and regional approach we'll be dealing with. So I know Michelle always handles that for us, but I did- I did reach out to Anthony up there. The other thing I have to say something about is our CRM system. When I was there, I was walking through the exhibition hall and had a gentleman go, hey, come here, I see you're the mayor of Commerce City. You guys ever, you know, you ever thought about going paperless for your complaint system? And it's something that we've had for several years now, and I've gotten much more used to using it, thanks to Mr. McLeodon. But this gentleman was kind of shocked when I said, yeah, we already have a system in place, and he wanted more details on our system. So I showed him that we have an app. You just go to the Go Request, and anybody at home watching can do this. Google search Go Request, pick Commerce City, and then you can take a picture of what the complaint or violation is. You put down whether it's traffic-related, graffiti, code enforcement, there's a trash, illegal dumping, there's a variety of complaints you can pick. You take a picture, you submit it, it goes directly to that department. That department then responds immediately that they've received it, and then, once they work that problem and get it dealt with, they send out a closure of what they did to alleviate that problem. It could be a streetlight being out. When I went over this with that gentleman, he said, you know, first of all, you should call the company that you guys use as a provider and give a testimony because you laid that out perfectly, and I don't even want to show you what we offer because it sounds like you guys have everything under control. He said he was really surprised to see a community of our size having a system like we have because most big cities don't have a system like we have. And he was thoroughly impressed, and which, that impressed me even more about the capability of our staff. I know Michelle had a lot to do with that, so thank you, Roger, Michelle, City Manager. I know you guys, your team, did a lot to make that happen. And for those of you that are residents of Commerce City that aren't using that Go Request system, it is phenomenal. Mr. Thomas, when you have snow removal problems along Highway Two, now that it's our road, take that picture, send it in. Automatic reply, but it is the best way to get that information to our staff in a timely manner and get it taken care of in a timely manner. So congratulations again to our staff for stepping outside of the box and doing more for us than what most cities could only wish for. Let's see, what else I got here? One last thing. Everybody have a very happy Thanksgiving this week. I will, with that, if anybody has anything they'd like to add to my reports, now's the time. Mr. Bullock, I see you pointing at me. But now's the time, and then we'll close the meeting out and move on. Mr. McLeodon, did you have anything to add?
No, this is your turn.
All right. Mr. Douglas?
Yes. I sit on the E470 board, and we approved through resolution to keep the rates for 2018 and 19 and 2020, to increase the rates, but to also raise the rates on toll plates as far as fees. So basically, if you have a transponder, there are now a little chip in the window that's free for E470. You can go to your local grocery store and sign up for that, and then that little Band-Aid chip will be sent to you through the mail at no cost. But if you opt out of that and just want to be able to drive on E470, you'll be charged for license plate toll with the rate starting at $4.15 versus $2.95. So I encourage our citizens to go online and apply. It's free. Otherwise, you'll be charged 50% of the fee for license plate toll.
Thanks, Steve. Anyone else? Saying none. If there's nothing further to come before the City Council of Commerce City this evening, we are adjourned. We are now calling-